We'll start with a roll call. Roger Canoy here.
Melissa Keller here.
Eddie Venami here.
Monica Strange here.
All right, we will now proceed to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. The mission statement of our school is the Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society. Our district priorities are to articulate and support a cohesive Student Center PK through 12 vision for continuous school improvement, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century, and operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. We have, the agenda should be supplied to all, everyone here at the table. Any discussion on the agenda or motions?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
I'd second that.
Motion to approve the agenda in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The agenda is approved. Next, we'll go to the open forum. Ted, anybody sign up?
Nobody signed up yet.
Okay. I will still read the statement that citizens, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees or students or their performance. All right, next item on the agenda is the Positive Accomplishments Food Pantry/Backpack Program, which seems fairly timely tonight, I think.
So we have Rose Dickinson and Angela Steinloggi here. I think Angela got roped into this. But they're going to talk a little bit about some of the changes that we've seen and kind of the direction for where we're headed this year.
Okay. So Angie and I have been helping with the food pantry since COVID, so for the last two years. During COVID, we kind of opened it up to anyone and everyone due to the circumstances. Over the last year, we just kind of noticed a lot of the support went to outside of the community rather than staying inside the community. And so our focus this next year is just bringing it back into the community. Starting today, today was our first food pantry. It is open to only Interstate 35 families. I'd say we, our families who came today were very appreciative. We offered it in the morning and then again in this evening. We get our food through the Food Bank of Iowa. We're also going to use the Food Bank of Iowa for our backpack program. We're going to take over the backpack program this upcoming year. Sue Makers is the one who has been doing it in the past year. But we're able to use the Food Bank of Iowa to order food for the backpack program so we could give families more quantity of food each week. We're hoping to just continue to grow the program. The food pantry is now located behind the auditorium stage, which is actually a perfect location. Families can pull up and enter from the outside straight into the pantry. What questions do you have for us?
So I guess my first question would be, you know, in the past, both monetary donations and food donations have been accepted, especially through the backpacks program. Is that, are you still accepting food donations or is it ever, all the food going through Food Bank of Iowa now?
All the food will go through Food Bank of Iowa. We would still take monetary donations, of course. Loaves of bread, you can't order that through Food Bank of Iowa. Like, there are items, in the past, we've used monetary donations to buy ground beef. Like, that's not something you can get through the Food Bank of Iowa. You can get pork and fish and chicken, but you can't get beef. And so we'll still take those donations just to go to items that we can't get otherwise.
So to be clear, if anybody wants to support the food bank program, don't bring food.
Well, we'd still, we'd still take it, I guess.
But it'd be easier and provide you more flexibility if it was monetary donations?
Yeah.
Okay.
For canned goods, we are, for canned goods, we are limited in some space that we have. So like, we can take canned goods and like, we had people, we had diapers this time, so we would take things like that, things that'll last longer than the potatoes that we have out there right now and stuff, so yes.
Or personal hygiene. We normally don't have that. We did get it in today's order, but that's not something we routinely have.
Will you post that on social media, the school, social media, like Facebook, Twitter, and so that people can donate if they want or what's changed with the program? When they can pick up and...
If I'm not rambling, we did contact all families who qualify for free and reduced lunch because if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, you automatically qualify for the pantry. With the Back to School Bash in August, we'll also push it then and at registration, just letting people know about it.
And is there any information on the app or, I guess, how can parents, besides social media, maybe get more information about both helping as well as, you know, receiving if they're in need? If there are people that are not on the reduced food list, can they still qualify? If there's an extenuating circumstances, like they get fired or lose their job or something like that?
Through the Food Bank of Iowa, they have to meet certain qualifications. Through the backpack program, they do not. And so we'll push that out more at registration at a back-to-school bash, but that's kind of where we're at for right now.
Got it.
Just if a family like loses their job during the year and they apply for boot stands or anything, I get monthly update, well, bi-monthly updates, like twice a month of people who have now gone on, so we could email the information out to them also.
Oh, that's, that's really helpful because, you know, with all the, you know, you're hearing of layoffs and inflationary pressures and everything else with the businesses around it, yep, that's great.
We used to, you know, fly and fall and then, but now we get twice a month, we get updates of who in our school, from our school recording, who in our school has now fallen, so we can share stuff with them.
And just, I saw that you guys were pushing around fresh fruits, vegetables, wonderful things. It looked really, really good. I mean, those are not cheap, so I'm sure people really appreciate it.
There's, there's a lot of frozen meat, which I think is a huge bonus for families.
That is. Well, thank you for your work on it.
Thank you.
All right, this is Dentlinger. We'll move on to the superintendent report.
Yeah, so I only have two items today for the superintendent report. The first is just an update on our professional development plan. I've been working with Jen Bothman on our director's professional development plan. So all of our directors, transportation, food service, maintenance, and then our administrative team are going to be doing a PD in August. And I think that really helps as we think about kind of cultureize, where do we want to be, and providing some additional training for leadership things that maybe our directors, when they go to a transportation conference, you hear all about bus safety or you hear about, you know, how you can use this app to help navigate, but not always about managing people. And so the idea is, is to help provide some of those skills that they maybe aren't necessarily getting in their conferences that they attend. And because we're so busy during the year, we're going to try and do that before school starts. So a little bit of team building, but then also some development with our directors and our administrative team on some of those, those other kind of managerial skills. Our admin team is going to be working through UBD training in August. So we all have a new admin team. I think everyone's aware of that. So we're going to, we're going to go through the same training. Again, it's kind of the direction that we've been on for three years in the district. And so we're going to bring everybody up to speed and also kind of tap into their skill set as we look at PD for next year and what that looks like for our whole staff. So we'll be doing that in August. And then our teacher PD right now is focused on culture work, which is something that we're going to continue to kind of pay attention to, obviously. The standards-based learning, standard-based grading, we're in the next phase of that. And that's being led by some of our instructional coaches. And then also work on our curriculum, which is the proficiency scales and things like that. So kind of in line with our district goals, but also extensions of what we did this last year as we look at our strategic plan and all of those components, that'll be what the focus is. Any questions about PD? That'll get fleshed out more once our administrators come on board. I see Danielle's here, if you haven't met Danielle. She's here, she's been here quite a bit, the last week or two getting kind of settled. So they'll be on board July 1st and then we'll, we'll put a little bit more pen to paper on the PD plan for specifics for all of our staff next year.
Is that PD day before the first day of the school year, like early August?
So yeah, all of our administrators, it's actually a 15-hour training. So we'll do it over the course of three or four days. The directors will be one day, and then we'll do kind of a lunch for everybody and so.
Did you say UBD?
Understanding by Design.
Got it.
Right.
Thank you.
The other topic I have on there is the Para-educator/Teacher Apprenticeship Grant. So this is something that we partnered with Creston, Van Meter, Winterset, and ourselves. We were awarded a grant for over $500,000 to have some of our associates that wanted to get to be para-educators go through training for that. We currently have one associate that's going to go on that path. It also allows some of our associates or paras who want to become teachers to be an apprentice for that teacher program so that they can come out as teachers on the end. And we have four people that are currently interested in that. So we are still very young, in the infancy of that program. There's a lot of questions that we have to get answers from the state, but we have five very excited people on staff about the potential of this. So that'll be more information as we get it, but I anticipate we'll have at least three people starting, if not four people, starting this fall in, you know, being educators and very committed to our district, so.
And then, so that, that is educational? So they help pay for some of the educational assistance, is that right?
Right, so for the para-educators, it actually is twofold. It actually helps pay for their salary and then it also helps pay for the tuition. So it offsets tuition for two years or three years, depending on the program. So the advantage is, is we get to have them on staff. They work with a program that's designed to work with people who are working and it's designed to meet all the requirements. So when they get done, they're licensed to be a teacher or to be a para right away. A lot of the programs, we have one, two individuals that already have a bachelor's degree that need to get the teaching component, the education component. So they'll do that for a year and then they can actually start student teaching next year, but they can actually be our teacher of record. So they can be on staff after one year of learning, right? And then another 20 years of learning in the classroom, but the book learning for a year. And then they actually student teach for a whole year. So the advantage is they have twice the amount of student teaching, but it also helps us because they can be in the classroom right away, so.
And then is there, so like a lot of the tuition reimbursement programs at private practices, there is like a time that they need to stay with the employer or is it, there's no lock?
There's nothing in the, in the law right now or in the code that says anything that, you know, if you, if you get this, you need to commit to three years or... I feel pretty confident that people who are applying are committed to the district. They've been with us, some of them for five, eight, 10 years. And so I think this is, this is an advantage for us, people who are established in the community and whose children or relatives go to school here. So we have talked, we are in communication. Once we get a little bit more information from the state, we're going to talk with our legal counsel to see if that's an option that schools are pursuing and what it looks like. I would imagine it would have to be a board policy. And I think we've talked about that with that compensation group, that we might all set some of the costs for people who are willing to get an additional endorsement if we're short in an area, you know, like math or science. So I think we'll have to have some board policy around it, but it's just new enough from the state's perspective that we want to get a little bit more information on that before we decide how we want to structure our local policy to either complement it or to be in addition to.
Oh, wonderful program, it sounds like.
That's all I have.
I was just wondering if you want to just give a brief summary on the hires and resignations for teachers quick? Because we're going to get into that in the consent agenda and just, before we hit that, just kind of give an overview of where we're standing because there's been some significant movements there, some really positive and some not so much.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll see we have our resignations. We had two teachers that we had hired this spring that for various reasons had to back out of their contracts. So they actually have never taught for us, but they were approved last month and they're going to be, we're going to accept their approval for resignation this month. And I think Mr. Castor talked about this for this hiring season. I think we've had four, which in all my years, I've never had one. So to have four in one year, and this is not new to, or it's unique to us. I've heard from several superintendents that this is a challenge. And so it'll be something that I think we'll be more prepared for next year. I don't know if there's anything we can do as far as a letter of intent or a letter of commitment, something that maybe has a little bit more weight than just saying, okay, we'll put you on the board meeting at the end of the month. And so we're talking through what that can look like. We did have, one of our instructional coaches is going to be an assistant principal, so we're excited for her, it's sad for us. But we did get our math teacher hired, we're excited about that hire. And we also have our high school social studies teacher hired. So right now, we're currently working on an elementary music position. And so we'll, we'll keep, you know, kind of doing our work on that. But we have, I think, two cook positions probably still open. And I would anticipate we have two custodial positions open. And our bus driving is full currently, but we have very few subs. And so that, that could lead to some problems, but right now, we're happy that we've got a full fleet of drivers. And then we also will be doing, and Jen's not here, registration is August 4th, is that correct? We're going to have a job fair on August 4th. So anybody that has had any interest in possibly being an associate or working in our food service department or custodial department, we encourage them to come. They can meet with people who currently do the job, they can get a tour of the building, we can talk them through benefits, we can help them apply. So that'll be on August 4th. I'll mention it again in July, but...
Is there a way we can promote that, given there's now a career path from para to teacher?
Yeah, that'll be part of the marketing that I think we do now that we haven't been able to do before.
Yeah, because, I mean, I might be in business and I might hate my job and maybe I want to become a teacher and I don't have a path otherwise, you know?
Sounds like something a lot of people should be saying.
I got a math major.
There we go.
All right, thank you for summarizing that. So next item is the consent agenda items. We have the past meeting minutes that are included in your packet, monthly bills and financial statement, resignations and contracts. We got Heather Peacock hired as the head girls volleyball coach. Sarah Skinner resigns as the high school social studies teacher. Austin Mustaine resigns as the elementary music teacher. Stephanie Brown resigns as instructional coach. Carla Meese resigns as daycare associate. Gage Mosier hired as high school social studies teacher. Jeffrey Engelhardt hired as high school math teacher. Blake Bauer hired as middle school assistant football coach. Dean Downs hired as varsity girls wrestling coach. And Christine Beathards transferred from bus driver to daycare associate. And then we also have the open enrollment to approve as attached in this as well. So any discussion on the consent items?
Sorry to take a step back, the resignations, the hires and the resignations. Could you just talk about the process? So we hire them in the spring, we approve them, but there was no contract signed or anything, right? Or was there a contract signed?
Not until after you approve them at the board meeting.
Got it, and in between the hiring and the contract signing...
It was actually the process of getting their information back, your background, your fingerprint, your ID, and something came up in that time period that we didn't get through the whole process of hiring.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
If no other discussion, I'd entertain any, any motions concerning the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'd second that.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Consent items are approved. Next, now we move into the items for discussion. The exciting revenue purpose statement, which does take action, but let's...
Let's talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, let's talk about it a little bit, yeah.
Right, so I think the board is familiar with this, but I'd like to just reiterate it to the public. We get save money, which comes from the state based on sales tax. And the revenue purpose statement is simply what, as a district, we're going to use that money for. It's not in any way an increase in taxes, it's not in any way shifting money from one group to another. It simply tells the, the school district, meaning us as an administrative team, what you agree to use that money for. So we've used it to build this auditorium, we've used it to build our CTE, we've used it to look at our, you know, do our roofing projects, buy buses. So those are all approved uses of the save money. And so we have to renew that statement, and this is a renewal of that statement. We did change a little bit of the language and I want to talk a little bit about why. One of the things that we've added to the language is a statement that in essence says, going forward, if the state approves a use for save money, then we also are going to approve it. Meaning if they decide in five years that you can use it for X, we're going to say, because the state's approved it, it's in Iowa code, we're also going to say, if the board approves that use, then we can use it for that as well. So instead of putting every specific thing in there as things change and evolve, we'll have that statement in there that says we can use it for whatever purpose the board deems appropriate, as long as it's within the scope of what Iowa allows, the state allows. So that was one of the changes. And then just kind of cleaning up some of the other language to match what the code currently says. So it's, it's in essence what we have on file right now for, for our use of that money, with the exception of updating it to Iowa code currently and putting in that statement that says if it is allowed in the future under Iowa code, then we'll be able to use it for that purpose as well.
So our current revenue purpose statement expires in, on January 1st of 2031.
Correct.
The new one that we are putting, will be putting out for vote, will go through what date?
It'll go through 2049.
2049, 2050, somewhere in there, right?
Correct.
So I think that's the important part of leaving it open to anything that the legislator may happen because 20 years from now, we have no idea what, what they may be able, what they may be enacting, what our society may look like, anything like that, so.
And so this would go into effect immediately. So it still covers everything that we currently do, but it would expand it if something new comes up next year or the year after.
And from a big picture standpoint, this, the whole goal of this is to provide transparency to the public, but then it also allows us to use that save tax through 2049 as collateral against something like, like an improvement or something like that. Right, so it gives us additional capacity if we, if we ever need it or desire it. And it's not like we have something immediate like, oh yeah, I want to go and build a whatever. It's just the flexibility that it provides.
Yeah, and this isn't about building anything. This is just the statement of what we can use it for.
Right, right.
Yeah, because if we ever, if we ever want to do a project like this again, you know, where we would have to bond for it, then that goes to the voters as well. So they get to determine on some of those, obviously, big ticker, ticket projects, if they want to approve it at that time or not. This is just saying you can only use it for this scope of what, what, what the intent is. This is all you can use it for, so I can't pay teacher salaries out of this. I can use it to buy technology, I can use it to demolish a building if we need to, I can use it for, right? It tells the district what we can use it for, but that's, that's all it is. It's what the purpose is of that money that we're getting from that tax.
And when it goes to the ballot, does the whole thing, do voters get to see the reading, the whole thing and say, yes, I approve?
Yes. And so this will be a September 13th election of this year. So this would be a ballot item on September 13th. And we'll get all this information out to public and get as many questions answered as people have and get as much information out as people want. But this, this will be something that we, we definitely talk about in July and in August. So if you get questions from people in the community, if you bring those, then we can answer them directly at these meetings and, you know, provide as much information as possible.
Great.
So this, what we're looking at tonight is really the first step in this process, which is basically setting up the election.
Correct.
Any other discussion on the RPS?
Do you tip, in the past, have you seen, have you had like a Q and A with parents, teachers here where they can ask questions or is it not really necessary or...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it's been necessary. I mean, we sure will. I mean, if anybody has questions, I can meet with them or we can have a meeting like this.
Like a public...
Oh yeah, anything that they have questions about, we can definitely address in whatever form makes the most sense. We'll put things in the, in the registration information, so all parents see it. We'll put things in the tri-corner, which will publish in August with kind of an explanation of it again. So we'll get it, and you know, Heather will put things out for Facebook and we'll get it out as many places as we can. But I'm, I mean, I always would be available, Ted would be available to answer any questions as well. Plus, if we have an interest, we can definitely host a community night where we have people come in and ask questions or we can give them an overview and answer questions.
Great, thank you.
I think it's important to note too that every district in the state is going through this process. Some have already done this and we're one of those that hasn't done it yet, so.
And the timing is important now because there's quite a few limitations on when the elections can be held, when you can call for election, and if for some reason it doesn't pass, the waiting period before you can have another election, right? So getting it done sooner rather than later is fairly important. Any other questions or discussion on the RPS? If not, I would entertain a motion on ordering of the election on the RPS as written in the agenda. And then after that, we would have a roll call vote if, if we do have a motion.
I'll make a, oh sorry, I'll make a motion to approve the revenue purpose statement.
The part that's in bold, you'll have to read that.
Resolution approving revenue purpose statement, ordering an election on a revenue purpose statement to authorize expedentures from revenue received from the state secure an advanced vision for education fund and ordering the publication of a notice of election.
All right. We got a motion and a second on the revenue purpose statement election. This will require a roll call vote. Eddie Venami?
Aye.
Melissa Keller?
Aye.
Monica Strange?
Aye.
Roger Canoy?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next item is school fees for the 2022-2023 school year.
So every year, we publish the fees before we have registered... So, every year, we publish the fees before we have registration. And so, this year, we do have a few changes to our fee schedule. I've shared that with you, it's also on the, on the overhead. We are looking at an increase for our food service, breakfast and lunch. And I know that seems like it's a pretty significant increase, given what we typically increase. However, we did not do anything last year, and we also are seeing a little bit more in inflation and costs for this year. So, this is, we get a costing calculator that tells us kind of where we should be, and we're still a little bit low, but we think that this is manageable. And so, that is the breakfast and lunch. And then, we also have a few increases to our daycare. And basically, based on our numbers and how many hours we're seeing kids in our programs, we're increasing some of those fees. For example, the wraparound care from 80 to $85. So, you can see those, those changes. So, those are the two areas where we're looking at fee increases. Everything else is consistent with what it's been.
What are the approximate, how many of our kids apply or qualify for free and reduced lunch?
And that's why we have Deanne Strange and Angie Stroh here tonight. So, can you guys come to the microphone? They can answer any question you have about this.
All right.
They're here just for you, Eddie, because she knew that question.
You almost lobbed that up there as a stump the expert type, so let's get the tough questions.
Our free and reduced for last year was only 27 or 28% are free, which is, so like the program that Des Moines is running on, gonna run on with all the free meals next year, you have to be between 42 at least. They prefer 50% free, and we are 19% free. So, we are a long ways from qualifying.
Because of income guidelines, or is it, wow?
And who, who has applied for, like, food stamps and things like that.
Interesting.
So, if we can get more to apply, it really, it's a good thing.
Right.
But we didn't increase, we didn't vote on an increase for 2021 or 21-22, and now we're 22-23. And so, there's been a lot of increase in costs, and there's been $3.09 worth of wage increase in that time- per hour. And they're going to take away some of the reimbursement, it's gonna go down. It's more than pre-pandemic, but less than pandemic. So, we're gonna be getting less from the government for reimbursement.
Interesting. And when do they take inflation into account? Because, I mean, I went to the grocery store just a few times, and I'm like, whoa.
That's why I think they're going to give us a little extra compared to what we should, what they were predicting we would get. That just came out, I was reading that today, where they think they're going, it looked like it was a done deal, but I don't, there's no figures out there of how much it is, but that it would be, like I say, more than pre-pandemic, but less than what we were receiving last year for reimbursement.
And this is a dumb question. So, in order to qualify for free and reduced lunch, you have to be on the WIC program?
No.
No. Okay. I'm sorry, I thought I tied those two together.
It can be income, it can be the family investment program, which is, it can be, Medicaid, some of the Medicaid, our Medicaid kids qualify for medical reasons. It can be food stamps, it can be income. Most of our income kids have to apply by application, and I got very few applications last year because people just didn't fill them out.
Right.
Because they were already getting free.
Okay.
So, that's affected a lot of schools.
And so, this year, this year's gonna be different, right? Because we're going off of a grid.
This year, we'll probably have more applications.
Yeah. So, it's gonna be an educational process where we have to go back and say, now you have to reapply in order to be qualified for this.
And that's why I had Mrs. Dentlinger put something out in the TriCorner, I think it was in March, to kind of give people a heads up that this was coming. So, usually, they recommend that you go up no more than 10 cents per year, but they figured in inflation, which was, I think, a cost of living increase was 4.04%. Plus, they did some other, another number that I didn't quite understand how they got to, but of why they were letting you do a catch-up cost of increase. So, even with the increase that we're doing, we will be at 3.25, and the recommended is 3.31, so we're actually still going to be 5 cents behind.
But most families aren't just seeing that 4% increase, it's going from zero to three bucks a meal or whatever. And so, that'll be a huge, you know, it's just adding one more thing in the budget-
I know.
That could already be stretched. And I'm not saying our increases, I, I'm just saying that the magnitude of change when you haven't paid, because we didn't, I think everybody got free, right?
Yeah, for two years.
Yeah. And now, free lunches isn't, like, if a, if a family applies for free lunches, they're not taking it out of the school district's pocket, it's coming from the federal government.
Right.
And so, if there's ever a stigma against, well, I should, I'm gonna, I'm too proud to sign up, right? Or anything like that, there shouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, we actually get more for a free meal than we do a paid meal.
Interesting.
I think that's the thing that-
They reimburse us at a higher rate.
Yeah, I think that's the thing that both Mrs. Stroh and Mrs. Strange would encourage is, if you even have a question, you should have, fill out the application. I mean, we have school districts in the state that ask every family to fill out the application. So, so that, you know, if you do qualify for something you didn't know about, we, we can support that, support your kids. And so, I think the one thing that we really want to reiterate is, there's, even if you fill it out and you don't qualify, we will let you know, but if you do qualify, we will let you know. And I think that that's, that's the key. And I know Mrs. Strange is, is around most of the summer, but primarily in August. If anybody has questions about it, or if anybody wants to walk through the process, registration, we do the same thing. But that applies to textbooks, it applies to any fees that we have in the school.
Driver's ed.
Driver's ed, all of those things qualify as support.
All linked to this one application?
It's all linked to this, yes.
AP, AP testing also.
Yeah.
So, we should, why aren't we one of the schools that require the application?
You can't require.
Or-
You can't require, you can suggest it.
Okay.
I mean, you can give it to everybody and, you know.
The income guidelines did go up quite a bit. Like, a family of four to qualify for reduced this coming year is like $52,000. And that's way higher than it was. And I think for free, it's like 36 or 37, so the numbers have went up quite a lot due to inflation.
Wow.
For being able to qualify.
And are you seeing supply chain issues, Angie, and the, like, tough to get things from the food?
A lot.
I would think.
A lot.
Yeah.
I try to, I try not to change the menu. Not so much because of the high school children, but because of the elementary ones, they don't have a choice. They come knowing hot lunch, or I'm bringing my cold lunch. But with the shortages, I've had to change sometimes three days a week. I got to where I was ordering two weeks ahead. And that's really hard-
That's tight.
-to do and keep your freezer organized. You have to start and work, you know, you just have to be organized. But I did that and found it was a little bit easier. If something didn't come in, here I had something real quick. Not one day did we have to go with not feeding them what they needed to have. So, I was very happy about that, but it was really hard. So, I'm thinking this year, they're saying that it's going to go back to a little bit of a normal stance. Now, we're hearing it's not. So, I'm thinking we're still gonna be struggling on, you know, what might be available and what might not.
Yeah.
So, we'll just have to go with it.
But the, but the big, the main, most important thing I heard there is the kids never went without some-
No, never.
Quality food item in front of them.
Well, and I think what people don't realize, and this is on Angie, every time that she has to do a substitute, or we get a different brand or whatever, she has to go through for all of our diabetic children and all of our kids with allergies, and look at, okay, now this one has soy, so now this kid can't have it. She has to do that for every single item, and how she gets it all done, I don't know. But it's amazing that she does that for all the kids. You know, she has to re-figure the carbs, everything, for every substitute that we had last year. It was-
It's a lot of work.
It was.
No, I mean-
We did it, though.
Yeah.
But we did just sign up last week for a supply shortage- Assistance fund. Assistance fund. And we're gonna receive $19,567 or something like that. And all Angie and I have to do is, as the food comes in, there's only certain foods that qualify, but it'll be easy to qualify, like milk, cheese, yogurt.
Low processed versus high processed. So, I can do like shredded cheese, but not a pizza. So-
100% juice, all that stuff will qualify. So, as she gets her invoices, we're just gonna highlight items that qualify, put that in a separate file, make a copy, put it in a separate file until we get to the 19,000. And then, when they come to do our three-year review, which now it's been five because they're so far behind, then they'll look at our folder to make sure that we've spent it on what we were supposed to. But that'll be coming this year, too.
And we're still a part of the DOD program, which is the fresh produce program. I did sign up to receive $30,000 worth of free fresh produce for this upcoming year again. And it's, the kids love it.
Good.
The kids love it. And it's, I don't want to say it's free money, but it is something off of, off of us to have to pay. So, I appreciate those programs. They're good to have.
It just doesn't come out of our budget.
No, it does not.
So, I guess that would, that's where my question is, is, and I'm not asking you to be fortune tellers by any means, but, you know, we, we've, we didn't do an increase for two years, now we did this increase. Is there a risk of running at a deficit because of the costs you're seeing? And I know our, what we charge is based on state guidelines, right? The state tells us the range of where we can charge. Have they ever revisited that throughout a school year? I, I can't imagine in our lifetime they probably have, or-
Well, I think that if we think back, for those of you that were on the board, before the pandemic, we were $89,000 deficit.
70.
70.
70,000 deficit, and we had 2,000 cash.
Yeah, and it, and it was increasing. So, I think the challenge was, but we also had some anomalies the last, the few years before that. We were, our cafeteria was under construction, so we were, you know, moving kids and having them meet in different places, and people, you know, so it wasn't a normal year. And so, the way we've talked about it this year is, we, we know what our revenue is, or what our, what our fund balance is now. If we assume that that's zero, and just look at our costs for staffing, plus supplies, plus, you know, all the things we need to run the program, plus what we take in, we should get a pretty good idea if we're, we're at a price point that, that makes sense. I, I don't know that there's any reason we couldn't come back to the table in January and say, we need to get that 5 cent increase because of what we see in the last five months. I don't know, I think we've put ourselves in a position that we won't have to do that, but there's nothing that says as a board, you couldn't approve an increased fee in the middle of the year. But I think with this recommendation, that would not be something that we would ask, probably ask you to consider unless there's something, you know, you know.
We would just-
The state, the state would have to adjust their guideline, really, in order for us to go up too much, right?
No, we would have to show need.
Right.
So, with our bookkeeping and whatever, we could show-
Okay.
-that we were falling behind again, and we could show need, and we could increase.
And I am not advocating in any way for raising them further, I'm just asking the what ifs so that we kind of understand it a little bit better.
Well, and Angie and I are also working on, we're gonna try to have a hot vegetable besides the salad bar every day. And we are going to work on, this was an aha moment, with all the craziness, we forgot all about cycle menus that we used to have. And the head cook before Angie deleted all the work that Mary Ann and I had done in the cycle menus that we had. But I think that would take a load off of Angie, because you would have, like, we would have a warm weather and cold weather cycle menu. And so, we went through last week, and we picked like, well, she wrote down all the kids, the things that kids liked the best. So, it looks like we would do a four-week cycle menu. So, week one would always be the same, week two, week three, week four, and wherever you fell on the calendar, then you start with week one again. So, all of her nutrients, all of her allergies, all of her diabetic carbs and all that stuff would be figured for her all the time. And so, whenever you started a new month, you just drag and drop into your menu, and you're ready to go, you know what to order.
Any substitutions or any shortages, that's easy to fix, you just plonk it in there and check it out. But I think it's a good thing.
I think it'll take a load off of her.
Makes them more systematic.
Yes.
Then we'll have a cold weather one where you add chili and-
Holiday meals and even all your stuff.
Thanks for all the hard work, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions on the school fee item? All right, I'd entertain any motions on the school fees for 2022-2023?
I'd move to approve the school fees for 2022-2023 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve the school fees for 2022-2023. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye opposed? School fees are approved. Next item is pest control and garbage contract.
So, these come out every year. You can see that we sent it out for four different companies, and you can see the different bids that came in. They are recommending, this is Rick Gray is recommending, that we use TRM disposable, disposal and Kynex pest control for this upcoming school year.
Any questions on the pest control and garbage contracts? Entertain any motions on the bids for pest control and garbage contracts?
I'd move to approve the bids for pest control and garbage contacts for 2022-2023 as recommended.
I'll make a motion to second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bids for pest control and garbage contract as recommended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bids are approved. Discussion item, school safety grant, 50 grand.
So, yeah, I think this is one of those topics that, you know, where it's unfortunate that we have to talk about, but I think in light of the world we currently live in, it's really important that we are continually monitoring this. There is a grant that's available that was announced about a week and a half ago to help with school safety. I wanted to give you a breakdown of what that looked like. We're under the understanding that it'll be $50,000 for each building to upgrade safety things that are needed in the, in the building. But then, there's also additional funding, and then you can see what is there for a vulnerability assessment, digital mapping that's shared with first responders, radios for schools that are directly connected to law enforcement, we actually already have that, digital application for software for, you know, people who want to supply tips for threats and things like that, and then some additional monies for trainings. So, I wanted you to see the breakdown of that. Over the course of the next two months, the safety team will meet. I think we'll get a little bit more detail on this from the Department of Education. But we have talked about different things that we can possibly use this for. We're in the process of upgrading all of our radios so that we can communicate from bus to, to in the building, to the CTE, to everybody being with one radio instead of two or three that we currently are walking around with. We also have established kind of a command center. So, if we, we have to check cameras out and be able to have access to an all-call system, and just making sure that those things are ready to go. We've talked about, some of our doors don't always latch, so replacing the whole door frames. I mean, we've done some fixes this spring, but there are continual problems, so we're talking about just replacing the entire door. I mean, we've done some fixes this spring, but there are continual problems, so we're talking about just replacing the entire door. We've got in the elementary that way, the intercom is actually on the outside of the building, which one of our patrons actually asked that it be moved to the inside vestibule, similar to what the high school here is. Kind of, it's a, what I would call a holding cell, so we can actually see who the person is before we buzz them in, which is a nice add for down in the elementary, so that's gonna be done this summer. So some of those things we're looking at for, for safety. We've also talked about our alarm system. Part of our building will actually say what the alarm is for. There is a fire, please evacuate the building immediately. We can also program it to say there is an intruder, please, you know, whatever we want them to do, we can give direction. Some of our building is on the old system and it just blares the alarm, which cuts off our intercom system. So we're looking at how do we sync those things so that they work together? So if we do have something that happens, God forbid, we can at least communicate in a systematic way to our whole building, knowing that we're all under one roof and if there's a threat here, we can hopefully take care of getting middle school and elementary safe and as many of high schools safe as possible. So all of those things, we're talking about with the safety team. We'll also probably work with the emergency management coordinator for Madison County and do a threat assessment. We had one about four years ago. And so we'll look at that and then we'll look at and compare it to what we, what we have this year. Because we have done some significant changes, I would say, over the last three or four years as far as safety, but we just need to be always vigilant. So I wanted to give you an update on what that grant was and, and show you kind of what some of that funding was for.
So, so we have to apply for that grant through the DOE is what this says. Do you have any idea on timing, you're still waiting for direction?
We're waiting for direction. Yeah, they've already allocated the, the funding for the buildings, the, what we use it for, we have to, we have to send for approval. But the, but I wanted you to see the additional ones because I anticipate there'll be a couple of those that we'll apply for as well.
Those would be above and beyond the fifty thousand.
Correct.
Great.
And this is from the federal government?
This is from the state government.
Oh, it's from the state, got it, okay, thanks.
I have a quick question. So we recently approved a quote for radios out of a certain bucket of money. How does that work if we have a, you know?
Well, interesting enough, the radios are in back order until December. And so I'm thinking if we have the radios by this time, we talked to the company and they said if, if, if we've got the grant money, they don't, they don't mind having us use that to pay for, even if it's already been approved. So we'll work through the company and, and do that if we have additional funds in this, or we can apply different funds, you know, for that purpose, yes.
Thank you.
So the supply chain worked in our favor, is what I heard.
Well, I don't know, December's a long time since we ordered them in, in March.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, we have radios that currently work, I don't want anybody to think that we don't have any, but I just think accessibility between all of our entities is gonna be a little bit nicer when we've got one radio for everyone.
Great.
Okay, another question, sorry. Where it says for each public and private school building, is that, sorry, and you were talking about the elementary and the high school. Is that, is there a difference?
Yeah, we actually have three buildings here.
Okay.
So I anticipate we'll get a hundred and fifty thousand. Now, if I'm not interpreting that correctly, then we'll get fifty thousand. But we are, we are coded as three buildings according to the state of Iowa.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions on the school safety grant? All right, childcare grant for discussion.
It's all this money, right? So also, coming out in the last couple of, probably within the last six weeks, month, Governor Reynolds announced a twenty five million dollar childcare business incentive grant. And this was to expand or to develop daycare for the workforce. And so we have kind of dug in, we've been to the webinars. The application is due on July eighteenth. So if you remember, one of the reasons why I, I kind of am pushing maybe our facilities committee to talk through long-term planning is because when we look at a system and we look at funding, some of the things that we want to do are not cheap. So a, a new, let's say daycare center could be six million dollars. So we have to plan for that. We have to think about how we wanna bring that to the public, we have to look at our need, we have to do all of those things to make sure we're being fiscally responsible with taxpayer money. And so one of the things that we've been working with our facilities committee on is, okay, so long term, what do we wanna, what do we wanna do? What do we wanna see, where do we wanna be in twenty years so that we can plan for it now? And so that group has been phenomenal. I think we're meeting in the next month to talk about some of the things that were, were kind of thrown around as far as ideas. They, the, the group that we hired to work on this has talked to the teachers and the students and to some public community members. So they've been getting a lot of input. I think the plan is to have public meetings and, and so there's a lot of, just what do, what do we want as a community? And so I know one of the things that's been on our radar is daycare. And specifically birth to three, because we already have a three and up. And so when this grant came out, I thought, okay, is this something that we need to at least think about? And I think that the, the maximum award for this grant is three million dollars. And so if you remember about a year ago, we talked about the federal government had a grant that you could apply for that only allowed you to build with it. You couldn't use it for salaries, you couldn't use it for anything ongoing. It was just to build the structure of a daycare. And so I'm, I'm bringing this to you because I have to submit this application before July eighteenth. But I wanted you to be aware that three million dollars, if, if that's, if we were awarded that, would go a long way in us being able to provide that daycare service from birth to three. And so I think the, the idea is, I wanted to make you aware, because we'll be applying for the grant. And then if that, if that becomes a, a reality, then before we would accept the grant, we would have to make sure that we approve the, the plan for the facilities. I anticipate it would be in phases, you know, so if we say this is phase one and we get three million dollars for a three point five million dollar project, are we okay with that allocating five hundred thousand dollars to offset? So we'd have to have you vote on that before we could accept the grant.
And how long from the application to the acceptance?
Well, it's interesting you ask that because we're looking at July's dead week. And so we might have to move our board meeting up anyway. So I think it'll be around the, the same time. You know, it wouldn't be within a couple of days.
I'm sorry, but, so we apply, we, we apply in July, but then if we're awarded the grant, how long does it take for them to accept us?
Oh, I'm sorry, I think that they would tell us, I don't know if they gave us a specific date. My understanding, I think, is the beginning of the school year, so late August or September.
Got it.
Is what I anticipate.
For us to say yes, so.
Right, before they tell us if we even got it. But I would like us to have the conversation here about if that's where we wanna be feasibility so we can take action if we find out we do get it.
Got it, and you'll have all the, you'll have more of those details, like the timeline and everything else, right?
Yes, of course. But we're gonna start talking about it. And so I wanted to make sure everyone knew kind of what the steps in the process will be.
Yeah.
So that if you, if you hear about it, you can say, oh yeah, we're, we're gonna try and see if we can get a grant for that. And if we can, we wanna provide more services to our kids.
Yep, and it sounds like it's probably gonna be one of those, it's either gonna be not, no, no decision necessary or a no brainer, like.
I hope so.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I hope it's a no brainer.
I hope so too. I like those kind.
All right, any more discussion on the childcare grant? All right, before we adjourn, we should talk about the timing of the next meeting. The dual associations, girls and boys athletic unions have a dead week. Does it start Sunday, the twenty fourth or the twenty, or does it start Monday, the twenty fifth? Monday, the twenty fifth, which is our next board meeting. I think, I know I'm gonna be out of town, I don't know if you're out of town. So I would propose that we move it up. It sounds like for the grant, it would work well as, for the grant discussion. Do we wanna keep it on Monday night, just move it up one week, which would end up being the eighteenth, July eighteenth? Any major concerns there? No? Ted, you gonna be here?
Yes.
All right, we're good. So we'll move the next meeting to July eighteenth. Same time, same place.
Correct. And I, and I, and I'll visit with Roger and Jeremy, but it might be that we try and do a work session just to give you more details about where this facilities committee is before we actually have the board meeting. So that if you have additional questions, we have some time to answer those before August. But maybe a little bit more information about how that group is working and where we are. So it might be a, a meeting before the meeting if possible.
All right, I would entertain any motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.